All right, we're reconvening our November 5th, 2019 Planning Board meeting. And we're downstairs now. First on the agenda tonight is we have an A and R plan. And it's for Federal Road. It's map 131 lots 1-2A and 1-2B and 1-2C. AD make piece. And it's just a receipt of plans tonight.
Yes.
So we're not going to look at this tonight. We'll look at this at our next meeting, which will be in...
November 26th.
November 26th, okay.
Yeah, I hope you saw if they work. Why are they from the town?
No, the ink is going to dry up. Okay, now, next is an approval of a real lot on Church Street. It's map 8 lot 14. The discussion of possible approval. If you could speak about that, Jim.
Sure. This is one of the auction properties that the treasurer sold off. And there's a provision in the zoning bylaws that allow for a real lot. One of the requirements is that the planning board, I'm sorry, the building commissioner reviewed the requirements. And we have a memo here from Robert Francis, the building commissioner. And I'll just read it to the record for you. So it's dated October 31st, map 8 lot 14. The above referenced mapping lot was recently sold at town auction. This particular parcel has 3.51 acres of land and 75 feet of frontage and is located on Church Street, which is located in the RA District. Requirements of a real lot per Town and Carver zoning bylaw, section 2340, state, the area must be at least three acres. The lot width is at no point less than 40 feet. I feel this particular parcel meets all the requirements. Be considered as a real lot. In order for a building permit to be issued, a determination is needed from the planning board establishing that compliance with section 2340 requirement. Please advise. I'll attack if there's a copy of the parcel map from the assessors' records. And they show 75 feet of frontage on Church Street. And then, X, O, into the back. And so the applicant wanted to come to the board, get this certification, because they have a closing coming up pretty soon. I'm not sure is the applicant here?
Yes.
Right in the back. Did you want to come up and say anything?
If you could stand, please, and just give us your name and address.
My name is Ann Creed. It's actually my friend Matty's lot. I'm just helping him purchase it. And basically, I was under the impression that it was a buildable lot when we went to the town auction. It had got perked. And I had spoken with a couple of people about it at the town hall. It turns out that it, because of the real lot situation, I guess, you know, Mr. Francis told me that he thought it would be okay. And so I just came here to make sure. My ploy is, I really can't spend and help Matty buy the lot for $165,000 if you really can't build a single-family house on it. So he's lived in Carver his whole life. He's a firefighter down the street at the fire station that's down the street on Church Street there on the corner. And he's just going to build the house for him and his family and basically just wants to live there. So I just thought, it seems like a really, it's a great lot. It's just, I guess, I only have two weeks to either really purchase it or try to do something else, I guess. So I would appreciate it. I mean, it seems like it's, you know, a done deal with Mr. Francis at least, but obviously it's up to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And before we continue, maybe we should circulate a pad around and so people could put their names and addresses and email address, just because I know there's a lot of people out there tonight. And it's always good to have the people's names. Okay, so there is no plan of this property other than this assessors' map?
There is no, some of you sat on the board when I was previously before the project over on Fuller Street. But for those of you who were not here, Clean Energy Co. is a Colorado-based company. I work out of our Worcester, Massachusetts office. The company itself has been in existence for about seven years. We're doing business now with projects and some...
No plan?
No, nothing yet.
Is there a plan of record for this? I mean, the, when I look at this, you know, having done surveying for years, it's given feet and actually hundreds of a foot. So there must be some sort of plan that this is associated with, you would think.
Can you do public comment?
For this particular lot here? After we discuss this, I can... So this is lot 14.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, for full disclosure, I sat on the TOPS committee for many years. During the TOPS committee meeting, when we were looking at these properties that were going to go off for auction or be dedicated for certain uses in the community, these lots were picked out of the assessors' maps. Those maps are done, which would be what was at the registry of deeds, even though in front of us, we don't have a full set of drawings. These lots went through all the legal aspects to bring to auction as buildable lots, as what was there. I think what's in front of us and what the building commissioner is looking for is clarification of, A, is it, is it in the opinion, does it meet the requirements of the real lot according to the bylaw, which it does? And I think that's all he's looking for, to allow them to have a building, in his opinion, a building permit to build a single-family dwelling on that lot.
Okay.
Under the bylaw, when we looked at this in TOPS, under the bylaw, that was the same comment that I made at TOPS, is that it meets the requirements under the real lot, under the bylaw.
According to this information from the assessors' map?
Right. It's the same thing that would be put at the registry of deeds. If you went to the registry of deeds, you'd see the exact same cutout. I know we're used to seeing an actual lot with all the dimensions and stuff.
Yeah.
I'm sure that...
Well, it's going to have to follow if they put a house on it.
Pass it.
Because they have to get, there's going to have to be some sort of a survey...
Yep.
...to determine, you know, where the property lines are and if it meets the requirements. But since the frontage is, by requirement, is 40 feet, and this is 75 feet, I mean, that's a huge, you know, there could be a little bit of error there, but I mean, that's, that's almost double the frontage requirement. It's supposed to be three acres, and we got three and a half acres. So you would think, no matter what, it would meet the requirements for a building lot.
Right.
Well, based on the information in front of us, it does meet...
It does, yeah, yeah.
The building commissioner's just looking for determinations whether or not it meets the requirements under the bylaw of real lot.
Okay. Oh, as configuration, I guess.
This would have never gone out for a bid if the town's legal didn't go through to make sure that all the i's were dotted, t's were crossed, and stuff like that. It just wouldn't have got to the auction part of that. And I know that isn't in our purview. I just know that if it meets the requirements of the documents that's in front of us, we should direct the building commissioner as said.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments? It's pretty straightforward. Who's one lady there would like to say something? If you give us your name and address, please?
My name's Donna Marie Foren. And I live at 278 South Meadowville. So I just want to say, I want to give you a little bit of history on that property. So it used to be my grandmother and grandfather's property. And so the property ended up, there was nine relatives in the family, and the attorney that settled the estate forgot to add that into the estate. My father did not find out until 1980 that it was not part of the estate. So therefore, it ended up where it is today. That being said, it has a lot of history for me. Has a lot of personal, emotional attachment to that property. That being said, I would like to see a house put there. I would have loved to raise my children there. I really would have. And I would like to see it. It happens to be the straightest part of the street is right there. So it's a kind of a curvy, kind of a little bit of a curvy road. That happens to be the straightest part of the street. So if a driveway had to be put in, that would be perfect. The only thing is, the pine tree that's in the middle of where your driveway would be, my father planted that when he was seven years old. He would be 96 years old, so the tree is very old. So supposedly underneath that tree, there could be some money, too. Well, my grandparents, all the family history, that they would, they buried money...
Let's go dig.
...during those days underneath that tree. So you never know what could be underneath that tree. So I'm for putting a house on that lot.
All right.
Thank you very much.
And if you find money, she wants something.
But I want to be there when you cut the tree down.
All right, Jim, so...
They're just, I guess, looking for a vote.
To vote whether we recommend this as a building lot, as a real lot, building lot?
I'll make a motion to recommend this as a building lot for a single dwelling.
I'll second.
So you have a motion and second? Further discussion? Seeing none? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right.
Congratulations.
I hope they run any holes on the property tomorrow morning, for sure.
Going there tonight. Need money for golf.
Yeah, actually, you buy firm and washing property way up on... It's a beautiful piece of property. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, next is a public hearing continuation on the application of Nexon Energy LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to section 3100, 3580.60, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at 0R and 60 Rochester Road in Carver, Mass. It's assessors' map 92 lot 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22. This is to allow the construction and operation of a dual-use slash ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation and a pertinent equipment and interconnection in accordance with the solar bylaw in a residential agricultural area. So the last time, so we've done a site visit here, we opened up the hearing, we closed the public hearing at our last meeting. And I think we're just waiting for a decision?
Yes, we have a decision. You should have one in your packets.
Okay, so that was the latest. So when I saw you this morning, has that changed somewhat?
I believe we gave you one with all the changes to it. So what I did...
Oh, okay.
I drafted the decision and sent it to our peer reviewer, Andy Glides at Fussman O'Neill, as well as Sarah Stern, so that she could take a look at it. There were just a few minor changes. And what you have before you is the decision.
Do you want to go through that, Jim? Or, yeah, maybe you should.
Want to go through?
Yeah.
Read the conditions?
Yes, yes, please. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the conditions?
None.
If Jim goes through it, then we can make any additions or deletions.
Well, I'll start with the waivers requested.
Okay.
So under section 3130 and subsection 3131, our garmy littles. The sanitary sewage, it's not applicable to the project because it's solar panels. Subsection G, identify existing ten inch trees and tree and shrub masses. The size of the site makes it impossible to locate individual trees. And then subsection H, existing and proposed lighting, not applicable to the proposed project. Small motion light will be installed at the inverter pads. And then, under section 3580.25.1, waiver requested provide fencing within, waiver requested provide fencing within required setbacks. And then, under section 3580.26.3, a waiver is requested to install overhead utility connections from the point of interconnect. Fussman O'Neill recommends approval of this waiver due to the proposed location of overhead utilities and site restrictions within and around the cranberry bogs. And then I'll go down and review the conditions.
Okay.
Condition number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, A, a true copy of the recorded decision, as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, shall be submitted to the planning and permitting department. B, the applicant shall provide the planning and permitting department with documentation of every source's approval to install and maintain the interconnection within the utility easement, within the existing utility easement, as well as any new easements required to access proposed utility poles. Condition 1C, the developer shall submit and maintain a ground field manicuring and maintenance schedule to the planning and permitting department and the Carver Fire Department. Manicuring of ground fields shall occur twice per year at a minimum during the growing season. D, 1D, the developer shall submit an emergency response plan to the Carver Fire Department and planning and permitting departments. Any outstanding balance of the review inspections deposit account shall be paid prior to issuance of a building permit. That was 1E. Under 2, prior to issuance of electrical permit, the applicant shall provide board with a decommissioning bond in the amount 125% of decommissioning costs as indicated in a third-party decommissioning study to run with the life of the project. 2B, the applicant shall ensure compliance with national electrical requirements on access, fencing, and security. A statement of compliance shall be submitted to the building commissioner and planning director by the electrical inspector. 2C, final electrical line diagrams stamped by a licensed professional engineer shall be submitted to the town with the building permit submission. Condition 3, the project must be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Condition 4, the applicant shall conform to the recommendations of the Carver Fire Department found in two comment letters dated August 14, 2019. One commenting on site plan review, the other commenting on battery energy storage system, BESS, fire protection requirements. The Carver Fire Department must approve in writing any modifications to its recommendations. Item 4A, the proposed lithium ion battery storage systems shall be installed in accordance with MA 527 CMR 1.00, chapter 52, stationary battery storage systems. This includes, but is not limited to, section 52.3.10, an approved supervised smoke detection fire alarm system. Section 52.3.2, a thermal runaway system. And 52.3.7, a temperature maintained operating environment. 4B, the developer has proposed integrated fire suppression and detection systems. The design of these systems shall be in accordance with all applicable codes and requirements, including but not limited to NFPA 70, NFPA 72, NFPA 855, Massachusetts 527 CMR 1.00, and UL 9540. These systems shall be approved by the Carver Fire Department. A local disconnect shall be installed in order for emergency crews to shut down power to the BESS enclosure. Under condition 4C, in accordance with the email from CFD, Carver Fire Department dated September 19, 2019, new access roads shall be at least 12 feet wide, cleared of obstructions by two feet on both sides, be constructed of an all-weather surface, and be maintained for unimpeded travel of emergency vehicles. In addition, 16 feet of vertical clearance is required for large emergency vehicles. Condition 4D, the applicant shall work with Carver Fire regarding location of gates and arrangements for lock boxes. Item 4E, the applicant shall install signers consistent with the requirements for photovoltaic arrays and battery storage energy systems and submit a detailed sign package as part of the building permit application. Condition 5, clearing limits shall be marked in the field prior to clearing, and the planning board notified to allow them the upturn to verify clearing extents prior to beginning clearing activities. Condition 6, the applicant shall provide a final construction period pollution prevention and erosion and sediment control plan to the planning and permitting department prior to commencement of construction. Condition 7, dust controls, dust control is required during construction, and the road rate apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt, and debris. Condition number 8, construction equipment and trucks shall not idle or operate on site prior to 7:00 AM. Best efforts should be made to limit construction noise on Saturdays and Sundays. Condition number 9, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and use, 9A, the applicant shall provide training to the fire department for mitigating emergencies on site. 9B, the applicant shall provide a landscape maintenance agreement between the solar company and abuddars to the planning and permitting department. 9C, the applicant shall obtain a written acceptance of the final condition of access roads from the Carver Fire Department. 9D, as-built plan shall be submitted to the town's engineer and permitting department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. 9E, in accordance with section 3180, compliance of the zoning bylaws, the town's engineers shall inspect the project to ensure that it has been completed and compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions. Condition number 10, the applicant shall provide the Carver Planning Department with an annual report certified compliance with the operation and maintenance plan and providing annual generation of the facility in accordance with section 3580.43. Operation and maintenance plan shall include a schedule for maintenance and inspection activities. And condition 11, the applicant shall provide the planning and permitting department and Carver Fire Department with updated contact information should there be any change in ownership or management of the solar system, solar array system, within 30 days of any change. And that is it for the conditions.
Anybody have any questions? additions, deletions, any comments?
I would ask on condition number 2, the decommissioning bond. In the past, I know we've had applicants give specific numbers for that. I'd love to see a specific number put there. And then, it might be too late for this project, but we might want to consider finding a consistent third-party decommissioning study, because I've noticed discrepancies in the decommissioning costs between projects. And I've analyzed what they're thinking, you know, cost of labor per hour and other things. So there's, there's really no consistency. We're kind of relying on, on people who have different opinions. So in the future, we might want to look into having someone analyze all of these together, because one project is saying it's only $25 an hour to take something down, but another is saying it's $50 an hour. And that affects us in the future, so...
Usually, I consulting engineers, you know, in blinds. Usually, they go over the decommissioning, right, Jim?
I'd have to talk to them about that.
But they usually, do they look over?
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that information's generated yet.
Okay.
Sarah, did you want to talk to that?
So typically, just for the record, Sarah Stern, Bill's and Thomas. And all of the projects I've worked on, they've all been a little bit different in how that's approached. Typically, it's a third-party, an independent third-party consultant that provides that cost. And I know in the past, we have had that determination that we've been able to insert into the final decision. This particular one isn't ready yet to have that final number, so, but it is based on that 125% of the decom cost. So that's how it's being factored in, and that's how the past ones were done as well. They just happen to have those reports ready prior to the close of the hearing. So Jim and I had talked about this, how to capture this language, and we talked about kind of coming up with some template language as well. So I think we're kind of all on the same track. But it is a third-party group, not necessarily the peer review engineer. They're not necessarily the qualified party for that.
Okay.
Their focus is on the site design and civil engineering component of it, where a more specific group would take that, someone who's not necessarily as entrenched in the project itself, just looking straight at the numbers.
Okay, and not Bill's and Thomas?
Correct.
Okay.
So I just think in the future, we might want to consider having applicants use the same third-party consultant. Because specifically between this project and another one coming before us, there were really large discrepancies. I don't know who's more accurate, but it's something I think we should consider.
I guess we'll take a look at that and see how, how that all comes about, yeah. Yeah, we'll have Jim take a look at that, see what we can do. All right, anything else? Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Just a couple of quick questions on number five. The clearing limit should be marked in the field prior to clearing. The planning board notified. So before anything is cleared, we're going to be notified, is that...
That's the plan. So that you, the planning board, go out and see where, where the work is going to be done?
Okay. Because we haven't really had that before. Had a condition...
We can, we can even do it as, as Fussman O'Neill, as our engineer, they can even go out on behalf of the planning board and do that.
Basically, just to make sure things aren't taken down, that we all agree should stay. And then my other question on 9B, where it says the applicant shall provide a landscape maintenance agreement between the solar company and the abuddars to the planning board, planning and permitting department. With the maintenance agreement, and we just had an issue on another case where we find out the maintenance isn't kept up, how do we go about that?
So one of the, if you notice...
On the last...
One of the last conditions, we have the provision that the company's had to update us when they make a change, they sell, you know, sell, or they have a new management cut, company. So that's to get the information to us, so that when a citizen does contact us, we can then contact the appropriate person at the company to inform them that, you know, if there's an issue with the site, that they need to come in and do that.
So that 11 is really tied into that as well?
Right.
Where you said within 30 days of any change, meaning ownership change, or if the company sells to another company?
Right.
We're trying to find out who to fix a fence, for instance?
Right. Change.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that's covered, that's all.
Yeah, I have a question on 9B, too. There were some places where we were going to do some plantings, and you discussed it with the neighbors. So how does that go? I mean, I was just wondering if we should put something in that the plantings have to be approved by the, the abuddars? I see that the applicant should provide a landscape maintenance agreement. So that's after they've been put in, you're going to have a maintenance agreement with the abuddars, but...
Yes. If memory serves, that comment, that was, condition was based on a comment from Fussman O'Neill, where we had plantings off of the subject property, which happens to also be owned by Mr. Shores. So that kind of was a red flag for Fussman O'Neill. They saw that we were proposing planting off our... They saw that we were proposing planting off our site, but we assured them that it was commonly owned, and there was discussion about just making sure that everybody was on board with that. So, I think that's where that stemmed from, but the applicant has agreed to committing to any kind of landscape maintenance agreement amongst the abudders. And if you recall, this particular landscape screening, set of screening plans was developed in accordance with the abudders' requests, so that came straight from conversations with the neighbors on Rochester Road.
How many people did we screen there? I mean, I remember there was one house there that was quite close to the road.
There are a couple of areas that we proposed adding the solid fence as well as vegetative screening materials. Most of the homes are very well either set back with a significant screen, existing screen buffer, and a couple of them that had some thin spots that we proposed to fill in with evergreen trees primarily and a solid fence. So, all of that is the plan set that has gone through various iterations and edits by President O'Neill and Bills &amp; Thomas, so-
Okay, that's reflected on the plans, what they're going to put out there?
Yes, yes, as well as the planting schedule, size, number of plantings, species, and then the graphic layout as well.
And that will all be inspected at the end in order to issue a certificate of occupancy? Okay, so that protects the neighbors there, okay.
And you added the updated date of the plans, right, the October 9th?
Right.
I know I missed the October date, I had forgotten that we had done another iteration. And as long as that reference is in the-
And change 12th, and then also October 9th, revise October 9th.
Yep, so that's the most recent set that President O'Neill reviewed, so as long as that's referenced in the final decision, that's where that final landscape plan is located.
All right, any other questions? All right, so, let's take a motion.
Questions? What questions do you have?
The public hearing is closed. We closed the public hearing on this, so-
On this particular?
On this particular project, we did, yeah.
I'll save it for the next one.
Okay. Yeah, so the public hearing's been closed, just so everybody knows that, and because I think the last time that we were here for this particular project, I don't know if we had any abudders that came to the meeting. So, we had, we discussed everything, and so we closed the public hearing, and it was just, we were just waiting for this conditions, and we were going to vote on the conditions tonight. So, we have-
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Nexon Energies LLC requesting a special permit and site plan for 60 Rochester Road.
Second.
So, you have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstention? So, it's four and one. So, that should do it, then.
We're going to sign your copy?
Oh, yeah, so, do you have a copy print to sign tonight? Do we get a, do we get a sign-in sheet going around?
Yes.
Okay. Did everybody sign into the sign-in sheet? If you could, if you could bring it up.
Come on over there, got it?
Can I just ask one question, I just a word, for the storage, for the lithium, is it lithium ion or lithium ion batteries?
Ion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like the Energizer Bunny.
No, no, they're actually, they're quite dangerous, that's all, they, if they cause a pretty high fire, it's very difficult to get out, but lithium ion is much safer, especially in the type of projects-
I believe it's ion, but when we go into the other ones, if you want to discuss that, we can, we can discuss that.
And, well, it's probably good for you to note, too, that there's a condition in here that part of this, the fire department has to be updated and taught how, if there were any fire suppressants that needed to be taken care of out there for that.
Okay, that is very, very difficult.
That's exactly why the condition's in there, so that our fire department will be updated and ahead of the game on something like that.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I also want to point out that our fire department's done extensive research in this, and so they're the ones who've come up with a lot of the conditions that are part of our conditions here.
As well as they've attended special training for this exact purpose. I think Mr. Con.
We don't, okay, so we just sign in?
Connie has a question, but I know that the public-
The public hearing's been closed on this, if, when we go into, see, we have one more on our next hearing, it's an open hearing, it's continued, and then we can add some questions, but it's been, it's been closed on this, so, and we have two others, so, unless you want to get home early and watch the Celtics game. Well, we keep it just waiting. All right, okay, thank you. Sarah, you here for another one, or are you going home after this?
I'm just going to watch.
You love it so much.
All right. Okay, so let me, let me continue onward, so we finished up with that. So, the next on our schedule here tonight is on the application of Borrego Solar Systems Inc. requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw. This is located at 19 Ward Street. This is assessed as map on 20 Watt 6 and 6-1 in Carver, Mass. to allow the construction of a 2.5-megawatt DC ground-mounted solar and energy storage facility in accordance with the bylaw in a residential agricultural district. And we have opened the public hearing on this, and we have not closed the public hearing on this. I went by this today, I went by the, I just drove to, I've driven to these sites just to take a look, just to refresh my memory, and this is one that's already been constructed.
This is, to give you the record, Dean Smith from Borrego Solar. It is a new phase of an existing project, so if you go down to the Ward Street property, there is an existing system there. Unfortunately, we'll have to build an entire new system and have a separate interconnection. We can't just expand the system that's there. So, basically, what we're coming in and proposing is an expansion of the solar energy field because of the new bylaw changes that have been adopted here in the town, so that setback has been reduced substantially, so-
And because of what, if I could just interrupt you?
Sorry.
And why are the setbacks reduced in this particular case?
It's the bylaw changes that were voted in the summer's town meeting.
Okay.
So, we're depending on those, and that's-
And the reduced setback requirement from 200 down to?
From 200 down to, yes, what it is. There are several sections that apply.
Okay.
One of the things that I'd like to do is, is make sure that we're clear on exactly how those are going to be applied going forward. The plan set that we proposed showed a 12 and 1/2-foot setback, which there've been some comments regarding that. I was misreading some of the new bylaw sections. The 12 and 1/2 setback applies when it's a dual-use project. We're not, we're not proposing a dual-use on this property. The property owner and our project developer, Zach Farkas, are talking with the adjacent property owner, and we're hoping to come up with a joint development agreement with them, so that we can have a reduced setback. If that can't, can't be achieved, we would need to comply with the 50-foot setback that's in those new bylaw sections.
But it appears to be that on this particular project, when I went down and viewed it from Ward Street this afternoon, when I was at the base of the drive and looked up, this solar project is way out on the property.
It is, yes.
It's barely visible.
It is, is way up here on this aerial. So, there is a long drive down and around. The fire department has reviewed this plan set, they reviewed the previous one for, you know, adequate access for emergency vehicles and whatnot. South Meadow comes down through here, there is a small residential subdivision off to the west, but there's a substantial setback from that. So, and there is a lot of existing vegetation along the back of those lots. I believe when you're standing on this site, there's only one residence that you can even see over there, so it's 12 street, I mean, adjacent residences.
And the new project is all surrounded either by the existing solar field or by cranberry bogs that are around?
Right, there's a whole series of cranberry bogs to the west that are adjacent to what we've got proposed here. What the system itself constitutes, we're proposing a 2 and 1/2-megawatt addition to the site. It's on about 7.9 acres within the fenced area. There is an energy storage component involved with that, so we're proposing that with this phase. The first phase did not have the energy storage component. It will be built much in the same way as the existing site that's there, it will be fenced with a continuous chain-link fence that's locked at all times, gated for emergency access as requested by the fire department. There will just be a single light at the equipment area. It'll be on an eight-foot post, it's motion-activated, so it's not illuminated most of the time. It's an LED light that's shielded and directed downward, so it would just cast light in the general vicinity of that. There's not a lot of occasion that someone would need to be on-site after the sun has gone down anyway, because the PV system itself is only producing energy during the daylight hours, so there's very little call for someone to be there after, after dark, but if they are, it's there for safety purposes. We would be constructing a short extension of a driveway down to that equipment area with a turnaround for vehicles. Aside from that, there's not really a lot that's different from the other systems that we've proposed here in town, so I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning board might have, or the members of the public.
Does anybody have any, anybody have any questions?
Well, I can't really see the plans. Can you tell me if there are any poles involved, or is it underground connections?
There will be some poles, they're located at the north end. They'll be adjacent to the poles from the previous system, so they'll be along the driveway up here, just adjacent to Ward Street.
Do you know how many new ones will be added?
I don't have the plan right in front of me, I believe it's four.
Any other questions by board members?
Mr. Chair, just seeing that we just got this, so I want to go through it, but the energy storage component, can you get into that, just a little bit of what it is, is are they containers, are they, what are they?
Yes, they are in an enclosure that's like a trailer unit.
Yep.
It's UL-listed, so it does provide some containment there. They are lithium-ion battery systems.
Yep.
They are single cells that are enclosed, and then those are combined into a module that's also enclosed, and then those are combined into a rack that also provides additional enclosure. The system, Jesse at the fire department is very familiar with these systems and has attended a lot of training recently.
Jesse has.
He's very well aware of all of the fire codes that, that apply here. He did make a number of comments that should be included in your decision. In that regard, we're happy to comply with those NFPA codes and UL code requirements that he's outlined in his comments. It's equipped with a number of safety systems. There's a gas detection unit that would detect any gases that would be released if there is a thermal event. It is, it has a control system that monitors the operating temperature of those battery systems, so if there's an indication of a rising temperature, there's an internal fire suppression system that it's equipped with, so it would be extinguished if there is a buildup of thermal energy there, or, you know, any kind of a fire event.
The internal fire, not to interrupt you, the internal fire component, what are you using to put out the fire? Is it water, or is it a chemical?
No, it's a, it's a dry agent.
Okay.
I believe it's called NOVEX 1200. If I haven't submitted the material data sheet on that, I can, I can provide that for the board and for your peer reviewer.
I want to see the details on that and containment.
Okay. Our energy storage division has an emergency response plan that they've prepared, so I'll, I'll get that from them and submit that to the board, so it goes through all of the details of that. So, any, any details regarding the, the emergency systems or fire protection?
I've asked this a couple of times for any of the energy storage that we've done, is any type of fire protection, what have, that's going to be on these sites. Containment of the spillage after you extinguish, where it goes, we, I know you're very familiar that this town is on an aquifer, and we move water at harvest time and throughout the season everywhere, so whatever that containment needs to be, or whatever the chemical that you're using or what have you, whether it's just regular water to extinguish, I know that was some of the fervor at, at a couple of meetings that I've been to, I want to know what we're going to do with it, because once you open the container, it's going to spill out. So, that's my concern.
Okay, I can, I can get them to address that.
Any other questions by any other planning board members?
Sort of question, so the, this new proposal is because the setbacks have been produced, so where, so the red-
The red on this plan are the solar modules.
So, so the setback, so what is that?
This purple line here is where our plan is proposed. If you look at the plan set, you'd be able to see the property line. Unfortunately, the property lines down there are a little strange. For instance, the, this bog area actually extends beyond the western property boundary here. All of the bog roads are basically shared by all of the very operations down there, they've been used by multiple property owners over the years. So, it's part of the reason that they're talking with the adjacent property owner is just because of that, because the property lines don't really align with the uses that are there, so they're, they were trying to work that out, and it would make the most sense to be able to build out those, those bog areas rather than having to set back from that because of the separation from, from any uses that would be adjacent to it. It's all surrounded by the other bog areas.
So, everything, everything that is abutting, that is a bog?
Yes, it's all owned by Cobb to the west of where our property is, our project is sited, so, and these are all bogs that have been in operation for a long time.
Anybody else?
And was this, was this, I'm sorry, near the airport as well, wasn't it?
The airport is, yeah, I think less than a mile north. We did provide a glare study for this addition to the property. We had done one- We had done one on the first phase.
I remember that.
And coordinated with the municipal airport on that. So, I mean, we can reach back out to them, but this addition of the solar didn't really change the glare results, and they had accepted the earlier report. But I'm happy to coordinate with them again if the board has concerns.
So was a new report made for this new extension?
Yes.
Okay.
It included the existing system and then added the new project that we've got proposed
All right, anything else by any of the board members? All right, seeing no one, have anything? I've just opened the setback to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? If you could give us, stand up and give us your name and address, please.
Brittany Leachay, 148 Clement Street, Carver. I was more curious, I know he kind of answered that they're going to look into it, but I was more curious about containment and recovery in case of a fire. The recovery aspect is just as important as the containment, you know?
Sure.
Chucking it out in the woods, so not to say that they would do something like that, but you never know. People have done it in the past.
Usually the fire department looks at this pretty closely, and we'll get the answers to that. I mean, we've had these before. They're all, usually they're sealed units, and then they have the suppression that goes off inside. So, and usually it's contained. But we can get more details on this one at our next meeting.
Just curious in case of catastrophic failure.
Sure, but we can get some more information on that, but it'll be coming next, at the next meeting. But we'll get that, anybody's concerns.
Well, Dan, I'm unfortunately, I'm late to the party, but I was curious, what's the life cycle of these panels and all that material? Like, how long are we going to have before we have to find something to do with it?
Well, we start with a 20-year lease, and there are options for five-year extensions to that. So 30 years is really the predicted maximum useful lifetime of the systems. It would still be operating at the end of life, but it does drop off in efficiency of energy production after it's been in operation that long. So it would be planned to be decommissioned after that time. And we have provided an estimate of those costs, and we'll be placing a bond to the town if those funds are available if the owner is not taking care of that at the end of life. But it would still be the owner and operator's responsibility to decommission that, to disassemble the racks and the modules and return it as close to its pre-development state as possible, so.
Or replace it with the latest and greatest technology?
That could be a possibility, too. The technology changes very rapidly, so by that time, it'll be worlds ahead of where we are right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think one of the things.
If you could give us your name and address, please.
Sorry, Liz Taylor, 31 Russell Trufant. I think one of the things that you just stated is certainly a concern that the technology is changing by leaps and bounds. How quickly do, honestly, you anticipate this technology is antiquated?
Well.
In this scale?
We know that it's going to be producing energy at a certain rate for its lifetime, and that's really what things are based on. Because of the large capital costs of building a system like this, it doesn't become economically feasible until very far in the future to replace it. Even if the technology is improving rapidly, it just doesn't make economic sense until it's been in place for a long time.
So will your company continue to fund, if it's not making economic sense to continue to run these types of projects on this type of scale as technology increases, are, is there a risk that some of the things that we say now, including, you know, that you're going to take care of the properties, the abutters, you're going to have these different contracts that you'll sign into to make sure that you're taking care of different properties, is that going to fall by the wayside as your profits decline?
Well, I mean, that would be an economic decision. We're not expecting that to happen. But then the system would be decommissioned, and it would be disassembled and removed from the site. And if the owner didn't do that, the town would have the funds to do that based on the bonds that are in place.
Concerned with decommissioning process, where do these panels go? They're not really recyclable. They contain carcinogens and certain things that really can't be, including lead, you know, that we really can't recycle.
These, there's a number of types of solar modules out there. These are solid silicon modules. There aren't a lot of hazardous materials in these. There are some metal components that are recyclable. We're actually expecting that these will be recyclable at the end of life because as more and more of these systems get built, then there's a larger volume of those materials that make it more economically feasible to recycle them. At this point, systems are fairly new. Not a lot of them have been taken out of operation, so there's only a small volume of material. But there are studies that have been done on this type of module. The photos that go with those studies, they've been run over by heavy equipment. They're all distorted, and the glass covering that contains everything is cracked. Those were placed into a pit, and there was a leaching study done on that. And there were not hazardous materials leached out of them, even in that destroyed condition. So we'll be happy to provide that information to the town as well, the study, the leaching
Any other questions?
Nick to Burrows at Snabbit Bird.
Okay, thank you.
We mentioned decommissioning and the charity bond that goes with it, which protects the town. Is that an annual charity bond?
It would be placed in a short D vehicle that would be specified by the town. It could be a performance bond that's renewable on an annual basis. It could be a letter of credit. It could be an escrow account. It could be a cash deposit. So whatever the town's preference is there, it normally is a performance bond that gets renewed on an annual or biannual basis.
And who pays that?
The system owner would be responsible for. The system owner would be responsible for maintaining.
The solar owner?
Yes.
Okay. We've heard of Enron, and we've heard of Merrill Lynch, and all of these other big companies, not solar companies, bigger, bigger, bigger companies with lots of money. What happens when you go out of business? When you just say, we can't do it anymore after three years or seven years? Who pays the insurance bond? Do all of us in cover? Do we all get stuck with either we got to kick it in a tax rate, or we go in and take screwdrivers and take it apart ourselves? What happens is there's no guarantee on that charity bond that it is going to be in place in three years, five years, 10 years. Nobody's going to be there to pay the insurance premium.
That would be an issue for you to raise with your planning board. So you're here tonight, you can raise your concerns about that. As I said, there are a number of different types of short D instruments that that can be guaranteed under.
Right, but again, you know, all of these companies are fairly new. And, you know, some of the, some of the proposals are even newer because they are over bogs. There'll be farming. There'll be farming bogs just like they used to. They'll be ducking their heads when they do the picking, whatever they do. The problem is, when they decommission it, a new company that gets this idea and goes in and does it, a few years from now, that new company might not be here. And as I mentioned, there's some pretty big companies that have failed and weren't able to even pay subway fare to get their employees home. These companies go out of business, and I hope none of your companies go out of business. But the fact of the matter is, we as townspeople need to be protected concerning the decommissioning of this whole town that is going to be called Solar Town pretty soon. Okay? It's not going to be cranberry land anymore. So let's all think about that, because that is a big hit in the town's budget, and it's a big hit for every single towns person that has a concern. And General Motors, another one, yeah, they were lucky.
Mitch Mee.
All right. Mitch Mee, Jim Mash, Kay Mader, yeah. So we can go on and on. There's going to be some financial assurance that we're all protected by getting the solar panels out of here the way they came in.
That's what your board ensures that that will happen. So whatever their ruling says, you know, a bond will be placed in that form that's acceptable to the town.
Don't lose assurance.
Let me find out, how do we customarily do this now? I thought that once a field was built and that there was some assurance that some bond set aside, some money set aside.
I think it sounds like a subdivision project.
Yeah.
You know, the, the surety is against the lots, and so as time goes on, they build the improvements, and then those lots release. So I'm still learning that aspect of it, so that's something I got to check out, too, regarding the bonds.
Okay, if we could just look into that. I know, you know, we've had so many of these. I believe that we were covered for all this for decommissioning. Although, you know, it is on the cranberry owner's land. So these are being placed on private property, so, you know, ultimately, if the cranberry, if something happens, the cranberry bog owner would have to renew. But, but we don't.
If I get a drink for a minute. The reason the cranberry bog owners are doing this and building these dual purposes is because they don't have any money. Where are they going to get the money to do the decommissioning? They're going to leave it out there. They're going to say, goodbye, Carver, I'm moving to Kingston.
Kingston doesn't allow solar fields, so.
Exactly. And they should never.
Well, there's good, you know, there's different ways of looking at that. Yes?
My name's David Sabstall on Snapper Road. Why doesn't Kingston allow solar, dual-purpose solar? You'd have to ask Kingston.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Nobody here. I was unaware that they didn't allow.
Well, I wasn't either, but there's going to be a legitimate.
The reason does not prohibit solar fields. My company has two projects in the town, so they're not prohibited.
Okay, so they're not. Well, I've heard differently, but.
Are they on the land?
But I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
They can do it under the cover of darkness, I can assure you.
Yeah, yeah.
Bit of a.
I have no idea.
That's what that is.
You never, go ahead, Sarah.
I can comment on that. The Kingston solar bylaws, part of their zoning bylaws, has specific renewable energy districts that are.
Oh, okay.
That allow for certain types of large-scale projects. Smaller-scale projects are allowed throughout the town, but the large-scale are relegated to a specific district.
Okay.
So those are not residential agricultural districts? It varies, does it?
Yes.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Colton Louisville, 5 Ward Street. I can see the current solar array for my house, my backyard. How much taller is that going to be?
It's going to be the same height as it existed.
Okay. What's, where's Phase 3 going to go?
There are no plans for that at this point, but the property is actually very large.
It's 38 acres.
There's a number of additional bogs there. But we're not talking with the property owner about any additional development at this point. This was suggested just to take advantage of the reduction in the setbacks under the new bylaw requirements.
Yes?
Just curious.
Give us a name and address again, just for the record.
I'm sorry, Brittany Leachay, 148 Clement Street in Carver. I'm just curious, because the bylaws have changed that allow this, does that bring back into the various abutters' ability to deal with the screening from it?
Well, ultimately, we're going to go for a site walk out there. We'll schedule a site walk. Planning board goes out there and takes a look. And as we go out there, generally, we'll look and see what houses can see this thing and what houses can't. And then we'll discuss some sort of screening like we usually do. So, but we don't know until we go out there and actually take a look and see what's out there.
Mr. Chair, to Cornelius, it's a good question, and it needs to be raised. This is another brand-new application. There's, just because it's, a bog's an existing one, it's a brand-new application, so everything's on the table. That's how we look at it. It's totally separate.
Clearly, a lot of the people surrounding some of these projects are having second thoughts, and it's kind of late, and this might give some of the abutters the ability to get back in the game again.
It's a total independent project. It has nothing to do with a pre-existing project that it abuts.
Great, thanks.
So that's, that's a great question to ask, because when bylaws change, for instance, this is a good example of that, things will change, and people that, this gentleman here that can see the existing solar project, maybe he has an issue. Now, this is going to give him the opportunity, because it's a separate project, to address only on this separate project.
Right, right.
We can't go to the other one, but he can address this one. So it's open to everybody. But it's a great question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we'll treat this as a brand-new project, because things have changed. The game has changed, the zoning bylaws have changed, so we have to look at this as a new project. Anything else? Now, we'll schedule a site visit, and we'll have another meeting, and we'll try to get everybody's concerns addressed like we usually do. And then we'll go from there. We'll see, see what happens. But I guess the next thing to do is to schedule a site visit. And I, and usually, we have the field, where the new field is going to be, that would be marked out. Sometimes they're not marked out because it's just in certain cranberry bog areas where we can easily see where the, the edges of the solar panel systems are going to be.
In this case, that would be true.
Okay.
The bog road that borders it would be the delineation. There's a bog road that runs between our project site and these adjacent bogs to the west. So it's pretty clear-cut, and I would be happy to be there when the board walks it so that if we have questions about where the limits of the project are, I could answer those questions.
I would appreciate that. We usually have somebody out there to guide us through the wilderness out there, through the cranberry bogs. And I was just going to mention, since this is Kelly's first night, you know, generally, we'll let you speak. If you have any questions, you can certainly ask any questions that you want, and we'll also include you on our site visit, too. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, when are we going to go for a site visit on this property?
Mr. Chair, just for the board's information, I'm out of time until the 25th of November, but the board's more than happy to go out to a site visit, and I can always hook up with the applicant when I get back in town if need be.
Yeah, you're out, and you will be back the 25th?
Yep. It'll be chaos at that time, but I'll be back.
You and I may, if somebody could meet us on the 25th, unless, unless we could agree to all do it the 25th. Because the next few weeks, I'm in and out, so I won't be able to do anything until, I won't be around until the 22nd. But if the majority of the board can pick out a date for a site walk, it's fine with me, and then maybe Will and I can go separately. But.
It's fine with the 25th.
25th is good for Will, it's good for me, it's good for you.
It's good for me, too.
It's good for Jim.
25th? Monday, the 25th.
Monday, the 25th.
So, three.
Where he, yeah.
Just about three weeks from now?
Yeah.
Okay, 25th, that's Monday.
25th?
Are we going to, what time are we going to agree on?
I don't know, okay, okay. How about you, Kelly? Would you be available the 25th?
I will, anytime after 4:30.
That's not going to work, though.
We're breaking black lights. Maybe we can make something for like a Saturday during the day or something like that that might accommodate daylight. Well, could you just make daylight come in? That'd be better.
Well, okay, let's say this. Let's say. Let's say this. If, if the majority of the board could do it the 25th, if we could pick a time, and then we'll try to get Kelly a time. If you could do like two visits, if you could do.
Even if I can't attend myself, I can make sure that there's a representative there.
Somebody, yeah, all right.
Or the property owner is very familiar with our proposals.
Okay. So what time, let's do it this way. What time on the 25th would everybody be willing to go out there? Of course, the afternoons are very short now with daylight, so.
Pretty flexible at the morning, and I know that kind of works for Jen.
Yeah, I can be probably as early as nine, but I have to be home by like 2:30, anytime.
Nine is fine, nine is fine with me, is that work with everybody else?
That's fine. It's fine with me.
Okay, so let's do nine o'clock. So this would be site visit. How about Jim? I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't include you.
They're with you.
You're the most important guy in the, at the table, yeah.
Nope, nine, that'll work.
Okay. And what address would we meet you there?
Well, it's probably easiest to meet at Ward Street. I don't know what the number of that driveway is.
Yeah, I didn't notice either, but I put in my GPS 19.
It's just past five?
Yeah, somewhere around the block from five.
So if you, if we use Five Ward Street, it's just beyond that.
I'll drive down my driveway.
All right, we'll park in front of Five Ward Street then, but we'll drive on the driveway. Mr. Chairman. No, well, it's, the driveway's just past it. It's a big driveway, so if you go by five, it's on the right-hand side.
It's the first major driveway, other than residential drive.
Yeah, it's huge. And the solar field is, I mean, I looked and I just saw a ribbon of, just a tiny, it was very small from what I could see from the street, from where.
I can probably get someone to put up some signs there to indicate where it is.
Now.
You got a question?
Have a hand, yeah.
I just have one question. When you flip the map back over, can you point out where the houses are, homes are located on your map? They're just kind of hard to see.
Yes, there are residences here.
Okay.
I believe that's Canterbury.
Okay.
And there are residences up here, adjacent to Ward Street. There is one residence of an adjacent property owner that's situated back in here. It's one of the cranberry growers.
And what's on the right-hand, what's that?
This, I'm not sure what type of units they are, but it's South Meadow Village, I believe it's called.
Okay. My question, I think, is if you are, so putting in that, that red area would be new, correct?
Yes.
So what would prohibit you from moving it to the other side of the solar field? So it's not, so you're not now encroaching residential areas? Where you're moving back toward a wooded area that would have no sightline?
On this side. Only because of the property owner's preference. These are, these are fallow bog areas. These are productive bog areas, so it doesn't.
So this is not a dual-purpose project?
It's not, it's not a dual-use. So that has very different requirements in terms of getting the incentives from the state. The lower edge of the modules has to be at eight feet, so they have to be very tall. It's much more expensive to construct the racking for that. They also have spacing requirements between the modules, so that the ground is still gets a certain amount of sunlight.
What about that green area underneath that? I'm just thinking of ways that if you're not accommodating.
These are ponds, they're reservoirs.
It's a pond on the bottom?
This is a pond also, yes. And those are used for the agricultural operation.
What's the distance between the panels and the closest residential area?
It is about 500 feet to the nearest residence.
What was the previous setback that would have disallowed you to do this project?
There was previously a 200-foot setback.
Between projects?
Between, between the solar panel projects? It was 200 feet between the two?
There was, there was a setback from the property line.
And from the property line, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so you know what? If you could get, if Jim could give you a call and provide you with Kelly's telephone number, and then maybe you could work out a date with Kelly?
Sure.
And so that you could take her out and, and visit the site. And otherwise, the rest of the planning board will be there on the 25th of November at nine o'clock.
Okay.
And so I guess we'll need a motion to continue the public hearing to November 26th at seven o'clock.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until the 26th of November at seven o'clock.
Second then.
So your motion, and Jim was the first to second, I guess. Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And if we could get everyone's questions addressed, that would be good.
Sure, I'll try and get responses to any of the concerns that have been raised here.
Okay.
And if Jim gives me the contact, I'll pump for it.
Yes, for Kelly, yeah, get her up there. Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next is, we have a new public hearing, then I'll, I'll read the announcement. All right, we have a public hearing notice. If everybody could quiet down, please. I mean, because it's being filmed and it gets awful noisy if you're viewing this on TV. We have a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 5th, 2019. It was, in the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room One, on the application of Clean Energy Company, Joe Shanahan requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at Zero Snappet Road, which is assesses map 34 lot 2N5 and map 33 lot 9-C in Carver, Mass., to allow the construction of a 2-megawatt dual-use, large-scale, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic project proposed to be constructed and operated on and in conjunction with the existing cranberry bogs and residential agricultural area. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board Bruce Mackie chair, published dates October 4th and October 11th of 2019. So, good evening, Mr. Shanahan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Board Director. My name is Joe Shanahan. I'm Vice President of Real Estate Determining for Clean Energy Co. Eighteen states at this point. We're partnered with over 40 separate utilities. And we've got projects in each of those states. Over the last five years, we've done 38 projects here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As I alluded to earlier, a couple in Kingston, one here in Carver. We have Plington and a number of others down here on this part of the state. We also have a number of them in the western part of the state. We're here this evening proposing a 2-megawatt dual-use project on Timothy, Timothy Pink's property out on Snappet and James Breach Way. The site itself is a little over 41 acres. We're proposing to use about 11, a little less than 11 acres of that, the 2-megawatt system. You've heard enough of these projects already, including dual-use projects. I feel a little bit like the fourth contestant on American Idol, singing the same song you've heard before. And I know you'd always vote for Sarah over me anyway, so. But I would indicate to you, our facility would pretty much duplicate everything you've heard in prior dual-use projects. I'm happy to revisit a couple of subjects that they're still open in your mind. We would have lithium-ion storage on the site, much like the two that have been before you previously. We get through the same stringent review by your fire department. Quite candidly, your fire department is probably more up-to-date and on-tune with these energy storage than almost any other municipality in the state, because they've looked enough of them. They've drilled down on them. A couple of things I would like to call your attention to. First, with regard to Ms. Bogot's question earlier on decommissioning. We have submitted a decommissioning expert by a professional civil engineer. He's estimated the cost at $71,500 to decommission this project. You obviously can require a bond up to 125% of that amount if you choose to do so. We normally do a bond through Heartwood Fire Insurance Company. They're the oldest insurance company in the country with greater assets than any other insurance company that they've been around, I think, for 150 years. Our labor rates, equipment rental rates, equipment operator rates, everything is in our plan. But if the board has any questions about any particular item, how it adds up, I'm happy to share it with you. Our actual decommissioning estimate is at $91,000, but we're taking a credit for $20,000 in estimated salvage value if the site was broken down and the equipment removed. That brings us down to $71,000. The one other issue, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is address this gentleman's comments, which was a very valid comment or question with regard to, for instance, if my company, Clean Energy Company, goes out of business. This is a facility that will cost somewhere in the vicinity of $4.4 million to build. It's estimated to produce electricity for the next 25 to 30 years. It's a very, very valuable asset, both in terms of capital asset and long-term revenue stream. If our company went out of business, and it can happen, it almost happened at General Motors. It happened to a very large solar company called Sun Edison about two, two and a half years ago. You go out of business, that doesn't mean the asset disappears or shuts down. If it went into bankruptcy, there'd be a trustee in bankruptcy would come in, take over the asset, the revenue, et cetera. There would be an obligation to keep that bond active. Nobody is going to walk away from $4.4 million in value and 30-year revenue stream. Somebody is going to pick it up. The other thing, and I think everyone's aware of it, but just let me hit upon it again. One of the conditions that Mr. Walsh puts in your approvals, and you approve, is that these projects must have a decommissioning plan and decommissioning surety. So technically speaking, if we let our bond lapse 15 months from now, your building inspector, the code enforcement officer, could send us a letter and say, "If I don't see that bond back in place in 21 days, pull the plug. You can't operate in this town unless you fulfill continually all of your conditions that are here." So we're very capital about it. We post a bond, quite candidly, it's renewed every year, but we're very capital.
Protection, okay. There was just an article published, I think in the Providence Journal. Dick Ward was featured in it last week. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it. They're actually, they do have a fight in the game. They're one of the largest producers of cranberries in the state, and they're actually looking to do this on quite a few of their bogs. So just maybe a quick pro-cro quo.
To renew it every 10 months, because we don't want to get one of those letters. It's twofold. It's a black eye on the Town of Carver for us, but it's a black eye for me in every other town I go to proposing one of these projects, where all of a sudden, someone stands up and says, "Look what they did down in Carver." I'm never gonna get a project approved again if I let that kind of thing happen. So there's kind of a triple insurance here. The first of which is the value of the asset itself. The second is the issue of the revenue stream that's there for the next 30 years. And the third is, it has inherent value to us that we want to protect. So that's very important. I'm happy to address any of the matters that have come up earlier. This gentleman, Mr. Sinclair, mentioned containment recovery. We will, as you alluded to on the previous project, submit details of that for you. We have walked the site with the Conservation Commission. The site is very much remote. It has excellent natural screening. I will indicate there's one very beautiful property contiguous to our site, Mr. and Mrs. Perry's site, which faces radon, degrading water. We're committed to doing what we can in the way of screening on their behalf. I tried to speak to Mr. Perry about this a little earlier, but he was involved in the previous hearing. Whether it's a matter of us proposing screening and him reviewing it and saying, "Tweak it this, tweak it that", or whether it's us saying to him, "We're prepared to reimburse you X amount of dollars due to the screening you want for their property and their plan." The one reason that I do have to come forward with a screening plan immediately is any screening we do before, between their property and my site is in Buffalo. So I can't disagree with Mr. Perry to do certain things. I have to go before this gentleman and his colleagues on the Conservation Commission and say, "This is what I want to do. This is in your jurisdiction, so you have to approve it also." So that's part of it. We don't expect, obviously, anything to be approved tonight. I would expect you'd also want to do a site walk out there, and particularly look at the issue we're talking about now. I won't take any more time on this particular site. We would like to introduce Rich Tavazinski from Atlantic, our consultant engineer, to address some of the technical aspects of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rich Tavazinski, I'm with Atlantic Design Engineers, and I just wanted to review a couple specifics about the property, the project, and show you a few things on the plan. I have an aerial view of the, of the surrounding area, including the property, and I also mounted up the site plan with the specific zoning information and setback requirements, things like that, that was part of the submittal. But in terms of looking at the drawing, we always kind of feel an aerial, aerial view like this is probably the best, best way to visualize what's, what's going on here. So the property, the 41-acre site is outlined here in white. That's the actual boundaries of the property. It's comprised of two lots, but the total acreage is about 41 and a half acres. And the, the solar facility will be in two separate arrays. It's kind of shown in the work area here, on the northern portion of the property and then on the southern portion of the property. The reason they're separated is due to basically what's a perennial stream that's been identified as, on the site, which you can see. It's one of the bog ditches, but it has flowing water in it, those are the wetlands. Scientist has identified it as a natural perennial stream that runs through the site, and that has jurisdiction requirements with the Wetlands Protection Act of 100 and then another, like the 200 feet, and then an inner 100 foot surrounding that. And so we've kept the panels outside of that, the inner 100 feet surrounding this perennial stream. And that's shown, these, those 100 and 200-foot offsets are shown here in yellow. So as you can see, we've left all the work completely out of this 100-foot riverfront area that the wetlands scientist has identified. So that's the reason it's separated into two arrays like shown here. They, there will be some utility crossings overhead to connect these and also to get the interconnection out to High Street and Snappet Road. out to High Street and Snippet Road, but beyond that, there, we're keeping all of our work outside this hundred-foot, two-hundred-foot swath through the middle of the property. So in terms of the access to the site, it will be basically using the existing bog roads that are in place right now. Anticipated to be the one that's shown that ties into kind of High Street and Snippet Road in this location, that's where the access to the facility would take place. The utility interconnection would be also at that point, right in this location here. We've anticipated five utility poles, new poles to be proposed along this stretch here and tie it to the existing overhead that's impacted. There'd also be a site identification sign. There's also an existing gate that's there that will stay in terms of the access into the site itself. The facility will, based, because of the dual use on an operating cranberry bog, the only portion of the facility that's going to be fenced in will be the energy storage system and the electrical equipment cabinets. Those, I'll kind of outline those a little bit more so that you can see them here. Basically, we've situated those, in accordance with your bylaw, we've situated those as far away as possible from any of the abutting property lines. As you can see, it's essentially located as we can get it. There happens to be a fairly large access road area in here, which the equipment pads and the storage systems fit nicely in that location. So that's kind of how we picked that, and also met your bylaw in terms of essentially locating that as far away from property lines as possible. In terms of your biologists, in terms of setbacks, we've maintained the two-hundred-foot setbacks from all the property lines to the west and to the east, but we've maintained the twenty-five-foot setback to the property to the south, which is owned by A.G. Makepeace. And so we've acquired, CDC has acquired a letter from them that basically says that they're okay with reducing the setback in this area and allowing just a twenty-five-foot property line setback from their property. So that letter has been provided with part of your records. But everywhere else, we're maintaining the two-hundred-foot setback from the properties along Snippet Road and anything off of High Street or James Bridge Way, they're still maintaining the two-hundred-foot setback. As you can see, the site is cleared, it's a cranberry bog operation. We won't be proposing any grading or any stormwater facilities associated with this. There won't be any tree clearing or anything involved. So we've provided a stormwater report with the project being looked at by the Conservation Commission, but essentially, there won't be any increasing runoff from the property, from the solar facility. The drainage is going to operate just the way it does now under the present conditions. And it being a dual use, I'm sure you're familiar with some of the requirements that the DEP has put on dual-use facilities, but just to reiterate those, the panel heights that will be at a minimum, eight feet above the bog's surface. They'll be separated not only in terms of the roads, but between the panels, there'll be some spacing to allow fifty percent of the, fifty percent maximum shading underneath the panels. We've provided a study that shows how that is being achieved. In addition, we just need to provide access and maintain the bog operation underneath, which we've done, and it also has to, basically, the cranberry bog operation has to be maintained for the same amount of life, lifespan of the solar facility, and the owners and the applicant have committed to that. So, basically, that's the introduction that I had for you. These yellow green lines and stuff are kind of offsets and setbacks from the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, representing the hundred-foot buffer and the sixty-five-foot buffer that the Conservation Commission has. So those, you'll see those on this drawing, but those are really related to the Conservation Commission requirements for those delineations, along with the yellow, which is the riverfront area. So I guess at this point, I'll open it up to any other questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Any board members?
Are the bogs wet or dry harvested?
I do not know. They're wet.
Okay, and so the cranberry grower will retain ownership of the bogs?
Correct. For reasons.
And then are the panels fixed or tracking?
Fixed.
Okay.
I've actually gone up to the site. I went out when we first got the notice of this particular project, and I went up a driveway, I think it was on the opposite side, I went up, it's like a road, and, yeah, right up there.
That's actually James Bridge Way, it's kind of.
Yeah, yeah. So I went up there and I looked at it, and I just saw there was one house that was immediately near the project and really didn't have much screening at all. Okay, so that was, it was across the way, yeah.
In the Perry's.
Yeah, and then when I went down the street, it was pretty much enclosed, and then I took a right where the driveway for, access driveway for this particular project's going to be, and it was pretty well screened from the road, and I did see a lot of vegetation in back of the properties. But again, we'll take, we'll have to take a site walk there. And all I can say to the people that do live there, they're here tonight, the Perrys are here tonight, you know, we'll closely take a look at this, and, you know, we, when we have projects like this, there have been houses that, you know, that we've had screened. Some of them, according even by the bylaw, didn't have to be screened, but the solar companies have been pretty good, and it's just something that we'll have to talk to you about. If I may, just for the matter of that, Mr. Chairman, I've walked the site several times, but I walked it with the Conservation Commission, going back now, six weeks maybe, almost the entire Conservation Commission was there. And this jumps out. The Perrys have a beautiful single-family residential and then a converted barn, which I guess is an in-law apartment, although I don't want to characterize it as such. And right now, there is a strong stand of trees, probably twenty-five to thirty feet. It comes over to here, and then there's a pond here, so there's a gap between that stand of trees and the Perry's properties, which does look out on the log. I'm very sensitive to the issue. This gentleman, I think father-in-law, had me up in the yard to look. We are going to propose, or will propose to do, quite candidly, more than what we would normally have to do or propose to do, but because of the elevation of the property and because of the circumstances and because of the thirty-foot, thirty-foot trees that are here, for us to come in and say, "We're going to put in four-foot albaebytes across the way,"
Right.
"Does nothing for anybody for the next thirty years." So our planting plan, which when I have a chance to share with the Perrys, does propose twenty-two-foot trees, a number of them. It also proposes sixteen-to-eighteen-foot green giant albaebytes and some additional plantings to kind of bring it together between the trees here and the pond. Unfortunately, it's a double-edged sword. The Perrys right now have a beautiful view of the cranberry bog, so if I do the screening I'm proposing, they're not going to have that view anymore. But if I don't do the screening I'm proposing, they're going to have a view of the solar facility. The one good thing, if there is a good thing, is the solar facility faces in the opposite direction, so they're not looking out on the panels themselves, it's basically the back of the system. But that's kind of the almost civil lining to the cloud here. So I do hope to work with them. I hope we can reach some common ground on that particular issue, but I agree with the chair, it's an issue that we have to focus on.
Okay.
May I?
Yeah, I think.
I got two questions.
We'll start the board first, and then we'll go out to you people.
Mr. Chair, through you to the applicant, you had talked about a decommission estimate of ninety-some-odd thousand dollars. I see in the documents that you've drafted in the back, a seventy. Can you talk a little bit about this twenty-some-odd-thousand-dollar reduction that you've taken?
Yeah, I alluded to it earlier. Basically, if you look at our chart with regard to labor, equipment rental, operators, dumpsters, and all of those issues, if you add it all up, the gross number is about ninety-one-five. Your bylaw allows us to get a credit for salvage for the property. So our salvage estimate is twenty, so if you deduct the twenty salvage from the ninety-one, it comes down to a net cost of seventy-one. So if the town had to go in and do that, did get the twenty thousand salvage, it'd need the seventy-one for removal and restoration, and I anticipate you're going to bump that up to your one-twenty-five.
Yes. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Also, you had talked about the abutting property that A.G. Makepeace has. I see in your paperwork that you provided, they provided a letter documentation basically giving you their opinion that they don't have a problem with it for the setbacks. Is that in a waiver that you're going to provide, be asking us to do, to give you a waiver for that setback?
Your bylaw specifically indicates that it would be a twenty-five-foot setback if the abutting property agrees. If you finally need a waiver request, I'm happy to do it, but the way your bylaw reads, it appears that my requirement there is twenty-five feet.
You answered the question the way I wanted you to answer. Thank you.
All right, any other questions by the planning board members?
One of the things I just want to bring up, I know a lot of these people, it's the first time there's been to a hearing, especially with the solar and the dual use. Dual use is new, and as applicant had mentioned, the minimum height of the panel, the bottom is eight foot, so that's the lowest it'll be. As far as the top height?
We're looking, because this is fixed till somewhere between twelve feet, maybe as much as thirteen, but probably closer to twelve.
Okay, so just so the public's aware, the public at home, that this is a little bit different.
Yeah, obviously, the eight-four is based on bringing equipment and/or personnel in to harvest, and Sarah probably touched upon this, I wasn't in previous public hearings, but it's important for the public, as this board already knows, Sarah didn't invent dual-use, nor did I. Dual-use basically came as a result, and largely from the Cape Cod Cranberry Growers Association, working with Beacon Hill and the Department of Energy Resources and DEP came together and decided, for a combination of reasons, dual-use made sense. And then they collaborated with UMass Amherst and the Agricultural School up there to develop the requirements to remain an active cranberry bog, and that's for the height, the fifty percent shading, and there are another hundred-and-one requirements that come with that. We didn't invent the term, we didn't invent the concept, nor did we develop the requirements. We adhere to the requirements.
Are there other key pieces of that that you could explain to the public, the public at TV and the ones here? Just again, because this is so unusual.
Well, I think the biggest issue is, and I think Ms. Taylor was at a Conservation Commission meeting with us a few weeks ago, one of the big issues is production. You know, it's very easy to say, "Okay, we're going to be an active cranberry bog. If we come in, we build a solar facility, and all of a sudden, Tim Pink retires." That doesn't work. We're required on an annual basis to file reports with regard to the production of that cranberry bog. There's a threshold set here from the beginning, and then each year, there has to be at least a certain percentage of that that comes out of that cranberry bog. It can't be a pretend active cranberry operation. It can't be, "Snip a couple of vines, I'm a cranberry operation." There are some very detailed reporting requirements to maintain that, because ultimately, this gentleman and his colleagues at the Conservation Commission would never let you build anything in a wetland. DEP guidance has come out and said, "You can do it in an active cranberry bog," but if we don't maintain that active status, we're now in violation of the Wetlands Protection Act. So there's constant review on that panel. Anybody else? Anything additional? All right, we'll go out to the audience, and if I could just say this, if you could just speak to me, and then we'll get, I don't want to back and forth conversation, but I saw the Conservation Commission meeting, and I don't want it to go that way. If you could just speak to me, and we'll do things orderly, because lady has to take, Susan has to take her notes and everything, it just works better that way.
I don't, but I've never used it. I've been here for ten years, never used it, never had to.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I do want to ask a few questions and then something from the zoning pilots.
Sure.
Okay, first off, I heard Jim mention some of the contingencies in the letter. I'm saying the wrong word, it's not contingencies.
Conditions.
Conditions letter.
And the decision.
One of the things there, I heard, fire apparatus. Road needs to be wide enough for the fire apparatus. I would question that currently, and maybe there's some landscaping that needs to get done, I don't know. That's just a fire information. I don't think with all the new fire equipment we have in Kava and the size of that equipment, it's going to fit down some of those roads. I know it cannot get from Snabbit onto that use road where they currently harvest cranberries.
All right, I can answer that question for you. Each one of these projects is reviewed by the fire department, and it's reviewed very thoroughly, one for access, one for truck equipment, and also for fire suppression. And they're very good, and so they will make sure, if the roads will not support the equipment, they will be made to support the equipment. They have to be a certain width, so, and the fire department's very picky about that, so that'll be looked at very carefully.
Okay, because most of those roads are quite small. They're thin, they're not tarred, you know, when it rains, they're muck.
Yep.
Just a foilering for that. I also heard one of the other contingencies, I said the word wrong again, was the landscaping or the screening, as we're calling it, and the people responsible for that, I think I heard would be the property owner, or maybe it's the solar owner, I'm not sure. But either way, when we mention landscaping, we're probably talking about mowing lawns and cutting shrubs and so forth. As we're hearing here, these are thirty or forty-foot trees, and I won't look at them because you told me not to. These are thirty or forty-foot trees. What happens with an act of God? We just had this past week, I mean, some of us didn't have power for three or four days. Pembroke didn't have power for a week. Trees falling on these wires. The fact of the matter is, who is going to replace the Perry's screening?
Okay.
I don't know whether Mr. Pink will go out and buy some new trees because God took down, you know, ten or twelve of them. That's a consideration, and I, when you say, in the letter that the other Jim had, it was mentioned, they will do the maintenance. Maintenance, I hire a guy fifty bucks a week to do maintenance on the grass. That's not what we're looking for. Okay? And then, again, all due respect, I heard you say, Mr. Chairman, that in some cases... cases, screening is not done, and I do want to quote something, that's according to the Carver zoning bylaw, number three-five-eight-zero-point-two-five-point-one, setbacks, paragraph three. It clearly states that providing screening, this screening shall obscure front view all sides of at least fifty percent or one-hundred percent of the project if it's located in a residential agricultural zoning district, and I think that's what we're heading towards here, including upper levels of existing structures. The Perrys have a two-and-a-half story house. You walk to the second floor, and the cranberries look even better than they do from my deck in my barn, my converted barn. So it's there in the zoning bylaws, and it should be considered in any screening, whether they be thirty or forty-foot trees, and whether Mr. Pink is going to repair them, replace them, and cut the bushes around them.
Okay, those are your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for those questions. Could you answer those?
Just briefly, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I alluded to landscaping earlier. We have developed a landscape plan specifically focused on the Perry properties, so I don't want you to think it was pie in the sky. We've brought out a landscape architect, he's developed this planting plan, a planting inventory, et cetera. As I said, we're dealing with twenty-to-twenty-two-foot spruce, we're dealing with sixteen-to-eighteen green giants, we're dealing with a number of other fundamental trees in this area. As far as an active god taking down one of my trees, it's kind of in the same category of an active god came in and took down two of these trees. Unless the planting board started requiring people to post bonds to replace landscaping that's done in connection with the project, then I don't think you've ever done that before. That's a bit of the roll of the dice in an active god. What you could do, and I have no problem with that, they've done it before, I've got estimates for all these plantings in the planting plan, its delivery, its planting, its staking, if the board is concerned, because sometimes plantings don't take. If you want me to post a cash bond for three years to make sure these things take, and if one of these trees doesn't, the money's there, we either come back in and replace it, or the town can have it replaced with our money, and I'm happy to do that. But I kind of post the cash bond for the life tree. That just isn't practical.
But it's a requirement of the bylaws for that screening be there.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, it's not a requirement of the bylaws to ensure a tree for thirty years.
I didn't say ensure a tree.
Okay.
Can I keep the screening in place for twenty-five years? If that's what the project is, bylaws say the screening must cover one-hundred percent of the view for two-story houses.
Can I respond? To your point, section thirty-five-eighty dot twenty-five dot one, the setback part does say, "All required planting shall be maintained throughout the project's life and replaced as necessary."
Why?
It does not specify.
That's what I was, that's what I was saying.
I always read it as the applicant.
It would be, with all due respect, Ms. Bogart, I think it's understood that it would be the applicant, who in turn, obviously, would pass it to the owner of the facility, and just like the decommissioning bond I was alluding to earlier, which is a prerequisite to get your building permit and to operate, if I'm operating a facility, and that tree comes down, and Mr. Perry or his father-in-law comes to the building inspector and say, hey, by the way, you approved it with the twenty-two-foot spruce there, it got knocked down in the last storm, the building inspector can go to the owner and say, you're no longer in conformity with your permit, put the spruce tree back, or I'll issue a cease and desist on your operation.
Maybe we should look into that, Jim, I guess, to see what we could do. Your option, you did say something that you would post a bond or put up some money?
What I've done in certain communities is, and nothing is worse than abobites, you go out and you plant forty of them, and if you come back a year later, eighteen of them are dead and brown.
Yep.
So what I've done in a number of municipalities is I've posted a cash bond whereby, let's say the cost of two spruce trees, if they don't take, and you call me and say, hey, you got to go back and replace them, they didn't take, the Perrys are complaining, and I say, I'm not going to do it. Now, the town doesn't want to sue me through that whole process, so there's a cash bond to back up what's there, and if we don't do it, the town has the money to go do it. And I will cite, and I've never seen it happen in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Sarah may have some experience with it, the town of Minnesick of New York, where I have two projects, a very large solar company, I won't mention the name, because you might recognize it, had a project, they represented a landscape plan, they opened the project, the landscaping didn't get done, and the town told them to do it, they didn't do it well, the town closed down the project. You'd be surprised how quickly the landscaping went in in accordance with the plan, so you always do have that right.
We've also had a project similar to this, where we've had one house that was elevated over the project in town. It was last year, and we offered, the company, solar company, offered to plant trees of substantial size along the edge of the property, or they offered the owner the money for that. So they had a couple of landscape people come over, give them estimates on how much, you know, the size of the trees, and what it would cost to plant the trees, and as it turned out, that people actually took the money instead of doing the plantings. So they could either take the money, do the plantings themselves, or whatever.
The other reason you get involved in on this site, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. and Mrs. Perry, because their site is elevated, our land is down here, so the height of the tree on our land is X. If they decided they wanted the trees on their land on the up slope, for every foot you pick up on their land, you're adding another foot to the height of the trees.
Yep.
It requires some discussion.
This is exactly what happened at this other project, so.
We discussed putting the trees on their property, on their butter's property currently.
Yeah, yeah. So they just took the money for planting the trees at the bottom of the slope, and I don't know if they ever did plant the trees themselves or not, but it was their option to do either. Yes, go ahead. Name and address, please, again.
Liz Taylor, Russell Trufant. I have a question regarding that. In the bylaws, is it written that it would be acceptable to accept cash versus planting? Their elevation is a solid thirty feet off the ground. A twenty-two-foot spruce isn't going to cover anything. They have a panoramic deck on a beautiful home that it wouldn't even scratch the surface of masking the issue.
All right, we'll have to, you know, we'll have to take a look and see what we do on site walk, and then also, you know, should have, to get together and have some discussions on this, the landowner and Mr. Shanahan, and we'll see what happens.
I do have another question regarding that, the reduction in the price of the salvage material, taking the twenty thousand dollars. Just to go back to that, the recycling, so there's a serious problem with the decommissioning of solar panels in general. They're sitting because the cost to recycle these panels is cost prohibitive. They're huge, nobody wants to deal with them. The price, so the twenty thousand dollar reduction in cost, I don't know that it's a realistic expectation that that would be recouped. What's going to happen when we have acres of, eleven acres, I think this project is, worth of solar panels that we really can't do anything with? Right now, in some of the research that I've done, that the panels not only contain, they do contain some contaminants that are not recyclable, and any mechanism that finances the cost of recycling these with current revenues is just not sustainable. So to say that for twenty thousand, to take a twenty thousand dollar reduction off of that, I don't know that that makes sense in terms of the bond. The other question I have in regards to the bond, is that a 2019 rate, or are we looking at a 2049 rate, 2059 rate with inflation? Because, you know, a house in Carver thirty years ago is much different than a price of a home in Carver today. So are we taking into account that we're going to have, I'm assuming, at least a minimum of three percent cost per year increase over the next thirty years, that we should be adding to this project to decommission them?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
First, let's forget the issue of salvage value. I didn't come up with that number, and I'm sure Ms. Taylor would acknowledge she really has no professional background in it. It's not attributable to the solar panels. We're talking about the lithium ion storage unit, the electrical cabinet, and other items at the site, and twenty thousand dollars out of a four-point-four billion dollar capital low pay is a drop in the ocean. If you determine that you don't want to give a salvage value, I can live with that, but it's not picked out here, and it certainly would no great consequence. So I think that's important. If you look at our decommissioning plan and estimate, it recommends the amount be reviewed every five years, and the decommissioning sure to be increased accordingly. That's only a matter of practicality and efficiency. If you want to review it annually, we can do that, but with the number of projects you have in this town, you're going to have to hire a part-time accountant just to do your annual review assurances. So I can do it either way. We've just gotten into the flow, if you will, of a five-year review.
All right, so does that answer your question? Not happily, but it did, but, all right. Yep.
David Savaston, South Road. Are there any oil-based transformers there to boost line voltage up to the grid?
No.
So how, how does that connect up to the grid?
You've got to interconnect.
Yep, but there's no booster. It's just.
The solar panels don't make, what does the voltage of the solar panels go now?
Ultimately, you're at a total of two megawatts.
That's not voltage.
Individual panels, I couldn't tell you right now.
Well, it's got to get boosted up to the line voltage.
It's not, it's not oil booster, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, how does it get?
We have no petroleum products on site whatsoever.
How does it get transformed from, so you go through batteries, how does the voltage increase to your line voltage?
I honestly don't know. I'll get your summary if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could find that out, please. Any other questions?
Nicole Perry, Snaparoon. This is dual use. Is there any research showing that this will work, that this has worked in the past, that it's going to work for the next twenty years, that because they're covered by solar panels, the cranberries aren't getting sun? You need sun to turn cranberries red. Is there research? Any?
This is a brand-new concept. As I said, it's not mine. It's been developed by people who are far more expert in the field than I. We are relying on it, we are making a huge, as others are, huge capital investment in the fact that it works. The underlying risk, if you will, if that cranberry field does not live up to the requirements, and it is no longer an active cranberry bog, it is now a wetland on which we were only allowed to build the facility because it was an active cranberry bog.
Are there any other dual cranberry bogs in town?
We actually have the mock one.
No, we have, there is a mock one that we went to, and I think it's been up for, I don't know when, it's been up for about a year or so. I think this was the first harvest under it, and it seemed to work fine. The cranberries seemed to grow fine.
It seems to work fine, is right? Do you have before and afters, and can we get some of that recorded? Nothing? Then it doesn't work.
Well, it's done by, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I think the Massachusetts Corporation of Extension was doing the research out there, and they built the prototype, and they've been involved, if I understand correctly, with all the research going on into this, in addition to the cranberry industry, doing the research, so, and then that's what led to the legislation. But there are actual ports, that type of thing, we don't have those.
I think that's something we need to look into. I don't think this should just go up and just hope that it works for us. I paid a lot of money for my house. If I want to sell my house when I have solar panels on it, I'm not going to get what I got for it. Everyone in Carver who wants to sell their house in ten years when this whole town's covered with solar panels, you're going to feel the same way I feel right now. Research, let's not just throw it out there. University of Massachusetts, I have an article right here. They're doing research right now. There's no record. They don't know if it works. I'll give you the article.
They've grown broccoli.
Yeah, broccoli and kale. I'll take that.
Vegetables. They have not yet been successful with cranberries, and quote-unquote, "Cranberries need sun in order to turn red." You can't sell cranberries that aren't red.
I mean, all I can say is, under the prototype that they built in South Carver, the cranberries grew, and they found that what the shade wasn't on the cranberries all day long, the sun rotated around the panels, and that's the way they're set up, and it let the sun go through the panels, and so the berries grew, and, you know, they were plywood prototypes that they brought.
How did they compare two years prior? You just said you don't have any proof.
It's only.
You don't have proof.
Just a short.
Then continue to do that before you do this. Invest all this money into this and ruin in this town, I'm telling you. You do this for this. It's just going to continue and continue and continue and continue. No one's going to want to live here. This brand-new school's going to have no kids in it. You're going to have foreclosures on houses because people don't want to live here, they're not going, I'm just, it's an ongoing thing. I'm not the only one that's upset. There's a lot of people that aren't here, they've got kids, they couldn't come here tonight. They'll be at the town meeting. They'll be here for the next one.
Well, you know, the only thing that I can suggest is, I mean, the planning board can only go by the zoning bylaws, and if people feel, now that we've had this come to town, that the zoning bylaw should be changed, they can do that at town meeting.
If I have ten people, a hundred, a thousand people sign something, I'll do it.
I mean, you can, you can talk to the planning department and find out how to do that.
I actually think the process is really through the town clerk's office, in terms of number of registered voters, et cetera, that they need to, I guess, petition in order to get something into the town meeting.
So can this be put on hold? How does that work? Town meetings in what, April?
We have to take the application that's been filed in front of us. We have to look at today's bylaw, look at the application for the merits. Do they meet the requirements of the bylaw? From soup to nuts, and then we have to make a ruling based on the bylaws that the townspeople have put in place.
Okay.
So the application that's in front of us, we have to take that for its merits. We have to look at it, we've accepted the application, the hearing's been opened, we have to go through the process. The process includes all the information that you guys are providing us, any other information that we can get from the applicant, any information that we can get that's out there, to determine whether or not they meet the letter or the bylaw. And those laws were done at town meeting, and that's, we can't vary from that. So in a nutshell, to say to put on hold, the only way that you could really put this on hold is the applicant withdraw without prejudice. Then it would be determined whether or not the planning board would accept that. And I've been on this board for a lot of years, and I've never seen once that an applicant that asked to withdraw without prejudice that asked to withdraw without prejudice, that we didn't accept that. And it could be for numerous reasons.
The other point is, by statute, we're required to make a decision with certain time limits.
So, you know, in my mind, the only problem was this screening. So, we just have to, we just have to make sure that the screening is according to the And we'll take a look at that, and we'll look at that carefully because it does affect your people. Because I saw your house right up against the bog there when I went up.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask the butters a question? Because I've heard you talk about the cranberry bog. So, I want to give you a chance. How would you feel looking out at the arborvitae's or other proposed trees? Address that specifically.
So, I had two questions. I can answer maybe one.
Can we get your name, sir?
Yeah, Robert Perry from Bob's Snaparoon Road.
Thank you.
My question is, we did go to the conservation meeting because that was the first article, and it was way too much, obviously, way out of order. But they keep talking about guidelines and standards that they have to meet. So, I came here to hear it, and what I'm hearing is you guys have got, who oversees these guidelines as far as production? And is it just production or is it quality? Because I've heard plenty of people, don't know anything about cranberry, but I know a lot of people talking to me, they're worried about the color, and they can't get it if it's not white. You know, if it's white and not red and different things. Are we talking just volume? Hey, we picked the crop, and if it gets rejected, it gets rejected? Are we talking, you know, usable quality? And if it's not this board that oversees that, my question is, who does it? Because now I'm a little even more confused.
So, under the best, under the best information that I've read so far, under the new existing solar incentive that this gentleman's under and other applicants have been under for the dual use on still harvesting the bogs, all it says that I've been able to read is that it has to be a harvestable crop. Doesn't specify if it has to be pink, red, blue, white, or anything like that. Has to be harvestable. Doesn't say quantity either. Has to be harvestable. Now, that was set out by the solar incentive programs from the state, not from your local board here. So, they're coming in under that umbrella proposing this project.
And I could be confused because...
No, you're good, man. No, trust me.
Through you to you, I thought it was 50%.
No, I think you're thinking...
Was that where, did we use that number?
The limits of shading is 50%.
Right. And that's done through a study because we've got different angles and sun. It seemed, the plan seemed a little bit tight to me, but we're using pitches, so, you know, I'm not an expert. My concern is, I thought the crop was supposed to have a standard from what it was, and maybe I was wrong, full misunderstood the conservation meeting, what that number was supposed to be. Because they're supposed to tell us, the real question is, who's setting the standard of what's a active bog? You guys, I've had tons of people come up to me, more my wife, she's really been active on the social media. It's coming out like a freight train. We're part of a train. I mean, I understand it. It's a convoy that just opened up, and we get, we hear meeting after meeting after meeting. There's no limitation to how many people can come here. There's no, there's no, there's no, there's no way to slow this stuff down. So, you know, what maybe we as a town were thinking, trying to help cranberry growers, and not that we maybe were misled, but maybe we were naive enough to think, all right, hey, we've got to put some solar films in. Now, we're into the residential areas. I think it's a mistake to start with a residential area mixed use when there is effecting, not only my, I mean, everyone uses my house because I'm up, I'm elevated. They do have a major problem with my house because by the screening of 100%, I'm 25, 30 feet up in the air. That's where my foundation is. Okay? So, you go to the second story, depending on where you want to run that, we could be almost 50 feet up in the air. Personally, if this is where it's going, I just want to have something right. I'm not a jerk. I'm not even opposed to solar, but I think we're making a mistake by just saying, here's the guidelines, we're going to put some screening up, and it may just be a case of screening. And maybe that's where I'm going to just have to dig myself in a little bit. Not because I'm a jerk, not that because I don't want to work with them. But before, we need to slow it down so everybody else can get this under control, including the board and including people that are here. If this is what works, and this is what it is, then, you know, we'll put the screens up and we'll make me satisfied. To answer your question, I've been doing a lot of football, been doing a lot of work, renovating the house. I haven't put much thought into what would work for me. If I'm looking at trees versus the cranberry bog, again, I'm naive enough to think when I bought the place, wetlands, this isn't going to change. Wasn't under the impression, you know, Mr. Pink could have just neglected the bogs and I could be looking at, whatever. I could be looking at a lot of other things being grown there. So, I'd like to tell you, I'm reasonable with a lot of this stuff. I came here hoping to get some answers, and we just, we still don't know who's going to set this bog here.
Mr. Chair, through you, if I could just respond a little bit?
Sure.
And I don't have the answers for it. None of us up here do. Okay? Whereas this new incentive program is as new to us as it is to everybody else in the Commonwealth. It was established by people up in the State House, and they did all this research, and this is how, this is what we have to deal with. We have a local bylaw that's in place now that we're going to try to adhere to 100%. If you've seen any of the previous planning board decisions, we uphold 100% of what the people say in the bylaw, we do. We don't wait, period. We will not, for as long as I'm on this board. Your screening issue is a major process. Every applicant or application, whether it's a subdivision, or a solar project, or wastewater treatment plant, et cetera, is different, different avenues, different structures. You have a very unique, beautiful house that's there. We will see it when we go out to do the site visit. One part of that bylaw says screening. He's aware of it. He's already commented on it. That will have to be addressed. Every part of the existing bylaw, we're trying to adapt to the new incentive programs. Will there be changes done at town meeting? Yup, guaranteed, to address the new incentive program. It has to happen. Whether it comes from a citizen at Arone, and I think you need 100 registered voters, don't even bother. We work for you. You come here, you tell us, we're working to get the tweaks that we need to. That's what we're supposed to do. That's what we do. You don't need to go and overexert yourselves. The certain things that in this town that we have to address all the time, we always bring to town meeting, we always lodge on the agenda at town meeting for different tweaks. That's our job, and we find it out this way. I can't answer your questions. I can't answer your concerns. We've just seen the application. The chairman has said, we're going to see how it goes because we don't know. This project could fail as well as it could be approved. Equal playing field, straight from the start. So, everything that you bring to us, or your fellow citizens in the town, or your neighbors or anything, is perfect information for us because that's what we need. I don't know if that helps you.
No, I just wanted to speak my mind.
And please, stay active.
I can understand why you would want to do that. When I saw your property, it was, it's large, it's, you know, very nice, and it's right up against the bog.
People can come up and take a look at what we're talking about for the screening. There's, you know, someone's there, just walk up. I don't care. I'll acknowledge you're invited.
I think, I think you got to talk to Mr. Shanahan about the screening.
Yeah, absolutely. He came up to me while the meeting was in progress, so.
And I think there's people on the board here that if you weren't happy about it, you know, this, the project might not happen. So, somehow we got to work this out. This is a major issue. As far as the production of cranberries, that's not the planning board's...
Who's in there?
It's the state incentive.
I would say the state, it's the state.
Do I call the state?
I would look at, through you, Mr. Chair. I would go through the state, try to get the information through what the program's about. Who regulates that? Because I can't answer that question for you, and I apologize. Or I can look into it.
Would you mind?
I don't mind.
Could you? Thank you. Mr. Chair, I remember our first project like this up on Gate Street, I asked that exact same question because I was concerned with that as well. The answer that I and we were given was that it's at the state's discretion, and when I asked how often or how will it be enforced, the response given was that the state will do a random audit of a number of these projects any given year. So, not, we were told not every project will be looked at every year. That stuck out in my mind. So, that's the information that I and we were given at a prior meeting.
Well, we'll try to get those answers for you. Okay? And in the meantime, we can all look at this together and see if something can happen with this, you know? Any other questions?
Nicole Solly, 162 Center Street. Because, I'm not sure how to phrase this, though, confusing everybody. The application's being submitted now. If the application doesn't get, and I feel that, I'm not like Jason.
You're okay.
Dodging. If the application is submitted now, and it does not get approved, it goes through its stages where there's discussions and reviews and back and forth, and then the bylaws change in April. Does the application get approved based on now's bylaws or then?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The application is in front of us today on the, on the bylaws that are in place by the town today.
So, if we change the...
We have a time, we have a time limit to give a determination to the applicant, and I want to say it's 45 days or something like that. I don't know the specifics, okay? So, don't hold me to the number. There's a time limit that this board must make a determination, either for or against. If the, if the application fails, okay? The applicant has different avenues that he can go to to appeal our decision, all that other stuff, okay? If he comes back, say, in two years, or three years, or four years, with a similar project, but our bylaws have changed, he has to abide by those bylaws now. I think that answers your question.
It does. And then also, does the board have the discretion to determine that based on this particular application, that our bylaws are not specific enough to govern this given situation because the bylaws aren't specific? Because we haven't faced this? Because the whole, this is a brand-new application, a brand, you know, the dual use, thank you, dual use is a new thing. We haven't, as a community, had a chance to really consider the impact, and the bylaws don't necessarily speak to them right now. Does the committee have the ability or the discretion to say we don't have enough information to make an informed decision one way or another on this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. My personal opinion, in all the years I've been on this board, we do not. We have to go by the law that's in the blue book, the bylaws that are, that are set in place by this community. So, the existing laws are here, and this is what we go by.
So, there's nothing in the, set the governance against or for this?
No.
Okay.
If it's in here and it's, it's black and white, that's the key. It's black and white.
Yeah.
We can't say, well, we didn't know about this. Nobody knew that the state was going to do this, and then all of a sudden, they pass the incentive program. All right.
And then we have to react with the bylaws and the community.
Yes.
So, we could essentially be voting on an application on something the community's never had a chance to even put down regulations on.
With all due respect, Mr. Jim, this lady is suggesting to the board and the body that this board may be acting on my project as something that it's never seen before, when in fact, this board approved a dual-use project an hour and a half.
We have.
So...
Oh, with due respect, I'm talking about, my, my, my response was, the community has put together your blue book, and we voted on the different regulations and the bylaws based on our knowledge. You might have, obviously, more experience. Definitely have more experience. But with, with this type of project, but from a community perspective, we're just seeing this influx now, and perhaps maybe as a community, we want to look, wait a second, we're going really fast to Nicole's point. We might want to look at this. We may want to change our bylaws. That was my point.
And that's the way I took it. No offense to the applicant, and I understand your concern. It's, this is how we end up changing stuff at town meeting because the community sees what happens here.
Sound learning.
Exactly. And we have to abide by the, the previous applicant met all the requirements of the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And that's what you go by?
The, the board could make a positive determination or a negative determination. The board, in that particular instance, made a positive determination because they met all the checkmarks. They met all the requirements of what was. We could have went against the bylaws of the town, me and you guys, the town in general, and said no. The applicant could file suit in court. We would spend thousands and thousands of taxpayers' money to defend it and lose, and have to pay that end of it. So, when it comes to the bylaws, it's black and white to us. We have to adhere strictly to that. What comes down the road tomorrow, we don't know. But when it comes, the community in a whole has to address it. And this is how we do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just so you'll note, Nikki, that there is a bylaw regarding dual use on the books now that was voted at the last town meeting. So, I'm not sure if your question was that we don't have a bylaw that's addressing dual use yet. But that was, that was proposed and voted on at the town meeting because we knew this was coming. But like Will just said, if it has to be tweaked, town meeting's the time, time to do it. But right now, the law...
It was more like, if people weren't as informed or as familiar with this.
Correct.
And they, they certainly, I mean, I certainly was not at the last town meeting. So, that was, and I was there voting for a playground. And so, but that was something I was familiar with. I was, I was involved in. So, this is something I'm learning more about now. That would have been more Greek to me. I would have been like, wait, what? So, that, that was my only concern is, as the community, you know, learns more about this and maybe changes some of those bylaws, how does something that's kind of in motion now apply? But I think the question was answered, so.
And these are the first in the state, really, that have happened. I mean, I think we're on the forefront of that. And, you know, we said, we keep saying, this participation's great. I mean, we've had, how many, how many have we approved so far? This is the first time we've had people show up to talk about it, which is great, because that's the feedback that we need. If we have to tweak it, if our laws have to be tweaked, let's do it. I mean, we all represent the people. We're not here making these for our own, you know? But any, in all, obviously, this is a different case because of the Perry's house and how it's located. Most of the others have been on flat ground. It's pretty easy to share that. But every case is different, and that's why, that's why we had to decide this, getting input from everybody. So, I just want to thank everybody for showing up, first of all.
Mr. Chair, Jim handed me some things that were updated since, since this most recent town meeting. And in section 3580 dot 60 for the special permit for a large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installation, one of the, one of the conditions that needs to be met, number three, is such use will not adversely affect the neighborhood in which it is sighted. And then after that, it does address setbacks and stuff for the dual use, but that is one of the conditions that's supposed to be met for these projects.
I saw a hand go up in the back.
It's saving warm. 12 South Main Street. For, for everybody who's looking at the zoning bylaws, I just wanted to point out that if you're looking at the zoning bylaws that are on the Carver website, they are a year and a half old. They are not the zoning bylaws that are in effect today. So, if you're seeing something that doesn't mention dual use, it's an older version of the, of the town bylaw. And, and I'm looking at them from the town warrant from last May or April, and it does say, for dual use, it says the screening issue, 100% screening shall be attained from the greater of a budding street grade or yard grade. It has nothing about the top of a house. So that kind of changes the game. So before you start, you know, I understand what you're thinking about, but I think you might be looking at older regulations that had different language about height of a house.
Okay. Okay, Jim, did you have something to say?
Street level was worse.
Yeah, street level was worse.
Yeah, that's right. Street level was worse.
There's an appeal period, or the period where the attorney general reviews the documents that were approved, or the articles that were approved at a town meeting. So those were completed roughly around August. Then there's another 90-day appeal period where anyone could go to the town clerk's office and file an appeal. That period has ended, and so the town clerk has gone ahead and kind of consolidated those changes into a document, which I have copies here for the planning board members. And then I guess you can contact the clerk's office if you want to get a copy of these. And then at some point, she has to consolidate these changes into the regular bylaws. And so she'll be working on that at some point. So I just want to point that out to the board that we do know these changes. I was going to give it up at the end of the meeting, but I thought it was appropriate to bring it up now.
Okay. I saw a hand, I mean, you have to realize that we're going to go on a sidewalk. You know, every one of these projects is different. As Jim said, if you have a flat project, I mean, some people have hundreds of feet of woods that's screening, or it's flat, or they're lower than the project and you can't see it, or there's some obstruction where they can't see the project. Yours is different. It's a more difficult one because you are elevated over the solar field. So everyone's different, and we will take a look at that. And it'll be better, we can discuss it better at the next meeting once we take our sidewalk. But there was one more hand, and.
My question is, when you're dealing with this thing, what is a harvestable crop?
I can't tell you.
Is it quality, quantity? Or you can drive a picking machine underneath the solar pad?
It has nothing to do with the planning board.
I understand that.
It has nothing to do with conservation, it has nothing to do. You'll have to call the state and ask them about the dual-use solar projects, what their requirements are. And we can do that, too. You know, we'll do that, too. We'll find that out if there's any restrictions. And did you have anything to say about that?
I have to submit the regulations, if you'd like to go through them. Quite candidly, I'm no different than you folks on how these people are.
We'll try to find that out for you, okay?
I mean, I know the answer, but I don't think it's the answer he wants to hear.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's something that, it's not, it's not our responsibility to count cranberries. Our thing is to look over the projects and make sure that it fits all the zoning bylaws that we have.
One more question. It's regarding the screen and the bylaws for the screen. What is the setback that would be required from their property line into the project itself for the install of a screen, of a natural screen? Would it be the 100-foot? Because technically, it's part of the project. Would that screen have to be part of? Like, it's not going to abut their property line, but then are we starting to talk about it not being able to work at all with?
We'd have to take a look at the plans, see where the property lines are, see the topography out there, and see where we could plant trees.
I made, Mr. Jim, and there is no setback requirement in this town or any other town for landscaping?
Not for screening, no, there isn't. But generally, it's on the applicant's property.
Correct.
But if it's better suited and will give you better screening, and it all depends on what you have out your backyard, we could put, you know, it could be placed on the abutter's property, too. But generally, it's on the applicant's. But this is an unusual case, so we'd have to take a look at that. And it all depends upon what you agree on, what you feel is right. That's something we have to think about.
Nick Javoros, Snap and Hurry. I hope that all of the boards here are as concerned as we, the residents, are about state monitoring of these projects. I heard Jen say, "Spot check here, spot check there." Where's the accountability? And everybody who approves or disapproves of these plans has got to have some concern about what the state is going to do. Is the state going to drive by on Route 3 to Route 44? Are they going to come in and look at this stuff? Are they going to ensure that the farmers and the growers are doing what they're supposed to be doing? They're the ones who set the laws in motion for the growers, for their relief. And I'm very uncomfortable with the state of Massachusetts in anything that they can monitor. And I'll mention state police overtime. I'll mention suspended licenses. Do we really think that anybody's going to come down here and see whether the cranberries are white or red or any other color? Or that Mr. Pink or any of the other growers are growing what the state says they're supposed to?
We'll find out about that. But I mean, the growers have to be concerned, too, because they do have to sell their crop. So we'll have to check, but we'll find out what's going on, but that's.
Well, we didn't say that they have to sell their crop. Mr. Perry had mentioned a few minutes ago how much of that crop is sellable. If it's all white and not red, he's not going to sell any, but he's still produced. He grew cranberries. And just as we tested a bog here where we put plywood over a bog, sun and heat go through plywood. They don't go through solar panels, they're reflected off. So you're going to get red berries, I'm not really sure. And the state coming down here to say, "Hi, Carver, you're doing a good job, they're growing white berries." I'm not comfortable with it, and I would hope that everybody on every board here in Carver would feel as uncomfortable with the monitoring, policing, and accountability that the farmers, the growers are responsible for.
Well, we could find out more about this program. But whether that's jurisdiction, it's not. I mean, it's.
Well, I understand.
It doesn't have anything to do with us, you know?
I understand it's not dependent on jurisdiction. All the town is jurisdiction.
But we can look at, I mean, it's a state issue. It's a state issue.
Yes, yes.
They're the ones that put the program up, so.
And we know how that is.
But we can get, we could certainly get more information about it.
Can I ask one more question? I promise I'll be quiet after.
All right, we've got another meeting to go after the site visit, and.
The abutter is AD makepeace, is that correct? Is that the makepeace bog that had?
One of the abutters.
One of the abutters? That's the one that had given you the variance for the 25-foot?
A letter of no objection.
The letter of no objection.
Came up with at the last town meeting. That's when we changed the bylaw to these things. All right, if there are no more questions, seeing that. We'll go, we'll be here again with this. And I'm sure Mr. Shanahan heard all our concerns. Let's schedule a site visit. It'd be great if we could do.
After the other one, how much time do we need?
Well, you say you have until 2:30.
The Wood Street, I don't know. I don't think that that is really going to take us that long. Take, I don't think it would take more than an hour.
So you're suggesting we should probably try to do both of them?
Yeah, I mean, if we could do both of them, if everybody was available, if we could go from Wood Street, I mean, this is a thought.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. Could I ask you to be there if you're available at this time?
Yep.
Okay.
What was the time again? The 25th or 20?
Yeah.
Well, generally, generally, we just do the planning board members. But if we, if you could be home, we'd love to walk up on your property and take a look from your house and see, you know, what it's going to be, what it's going to look like. Because nobody here has any idea now. I mean, I've seen your house, I saw it was elevated. But I didn't even know if it was maybe the cranberry bog below that had that house, so.
Mr. Jim, if I might suggest to the board, if they haven't been outside before, probably the best way to come in is James Beach Way.
Okay, yep, that's the way I went in.
Plenty of parking at the end of the street. You can walk it from there.
So what time? If we schedule our first walk at 9:00, could we do this next one at 10:00? I mean, I don't think we'd want to do anything any sooner than 10:00. Or, you know, if someone could be available out there.
We'll be there at 9:30.
Yeah, and so if we finish this other one at 9:00 o'clock, I mean, is that agreeable to everyone? Does that work for everybody? Does it work for you?
I'm not going to be able to make it. I'm going to have to make arrangements with.
Okay, well, that's fine. I could take you out there. How about you, Kevin?
Right now, I can say, I could be there, but I might not be able to give out.
I could take, I could take you out there. Oh, see, then the next planning board meeting's at 7:00 the next day. 7:00 o'clock that night, unless somebody, unless I could take, or Jim could take somebody out there Tuesday before the meeting. Well, we'll have to just figure it out, okay? You're going to be gone, and.
Yep.
And then, okay, so let's do this at 10:00, then. And so that would be.
The 25th.
10:00, or sooner. And if you could give, if Jim has your number there, so if we get out sooner, or if we're a little bit later, we could give you a call. I'll be there, okay? And if that works for you, Jim, then we'll try to do the two of them that day and take a walk. So, let's see, I think we could do a motion to continue this public hearing.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Clean Energy Company to November 26th. I'll second that.
November 26th, okay, at 7:00. So the motion and the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so.
Sorry, you had to second?
I did.
All right. And in the meantime, you have some weeks. If you could just get together and discuss.
Work on it.
And see what happens. I mean, we've had this happen exactly before. We've had the other solar company, you know, talk with the abutting house, you know, the abutting property. They did work out an agreement, whether that's possible or not. But you'll never know unless you sit down and talk. And then you can tell us if you've come to some thing that you agree on. And if you don't, then tell us that you didn't, that's all. And then we'll see what happens.
Even if we agree on it, it's still going to go through conservation. There's still a couple other things that they're going to do.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because we could agree on everything. If conservation says, "Yeah, that's not going to work," it doesn't work.
Right.
You know what I mean? We're not just talking.
Yep.
There's other people involved.
But we'll carefully look at your property, that's for sure. It's a concern. It's a concern to me. I know it, you know, it could be very upsetting, and I hate to. You live right next to the cranberry bog, and that's why you moved there. I mean, this isn't, most of the time, we have solar fields, and they're tucked away. And a lot of them, that AD makepeace have, they're in places where you can't even see them. But this is a little different situation, so we'll have to take a look. We'll look at that carefully for you.
Okay.
All right, good night.
Thank you.
All right, next is planning board member notes. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say tonight?
Mr. Chair, very brief.
If you could move outside so we could continue our meeting. It's hard to hear, we just have one little speaker here and the people talking in the background. We can't, it can't be recorded. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just very brief. Last night, I attended the North Cala Water District Commissioner's meeting, where I'm a commissioner. The commissioner has entered into a verbal agreement with an applicant to potentially do a water extension project up in North Cala for a couple of businesses. So that's all good news. As far as the Route 44 project, I don't have any updates for the board as of yet. But I will expect the possibility some in our next meeting. So I'll bring that to you guys then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, planning director notes.
All right, so I've got a few things here. These are copies of the bylaws that were adopted at town meeting. And it's been through all the appeal periods and so on, so I wanted to give you copies of that. I know Carr Day Hill's working on consolidating into the existing bylaws. So she has the time to probably change it, and then we'll be making amendments to it way too soon. So I'm going to get those out to you. We have two other items in your packets. One is a request for the annual renewal of a special permit for bed and breakfast. It's 78 Rochester Road. The applicant is Jacob Brayley. And the requirement by the bylaw requires them to get a letter from the building official. And in this case, it's really having the certificate of inspection. And the property's been inspected by both the fire department and also our building commissioner. Actually, in this case, it was Guild, so inspected. So they have the certificate. I don't know if they have that in the packet. So we just need a vote to approve the extension of the special permit for another year.
Oh, this is our first bed and breakfast in Cala.
Actually, it's the second.
Or it's the third.
Oh, the third. Okay.
So what was the address on that?
78 Rochester.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the extension of the special permit for 78 Rochester Road, the bed and breakfast.
Second up.
Head motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, okay.
And then the other item in your packet is a letter. So this is a letter of support for MVP grant, Massachusetts Vulnerability Program grant that the town's applying for. And so we got one for the board of selectmen. We're trying to get one here from the planning board. And the goal of the grant is going to apply for up to, between six and eight, firefighting water sources, to make improvements to those water sources to help improve, you know, the firefighting capability of the fire department. And then related to that, the department, I don't know if anyone's heard this, but annually, they do the ISO requirements, which improves people's insurance capabilities. So the fire department is now able to give letters to residents to text an insurance agent or insurance company in order to get reduced rates for the upgrade in the ISO requirement. So this is another step to doing that. So I just need a vote and just numbers, signing the letter.
So what do we have?
So we're looking for a vote to recommend or a vote to approve?
Right, vote to recommend a recommendation to the MVP program for the town to get a grant.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the recommendation for the MVP program.
Who said that first? Kevin. Kevin.
I feel like I'm on Jeopardy.
Do I have motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's good, Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Just need people to.
Oh, we've got to sign the bottom? Okay, okay, that's awesome. And then there was something on the agenda about edit wording on Tremont Street solar decision?
We kind of.
Not going to do that tonight?
Yeah, we kind of, well, we're kind of dealing with it with Sarah. And, you know, they're, they're pretty close to having their analysis done, so they'll have an actual amount. But somewhere along the way, I was kind of borrowing language from previous decisions for solar. And the decision stated 125% of construction cost where it should have been decommissioning cost. And so that was, you know, kind of picked up. But it was after we signed the decision for that one. decision for that one. So I think, I think we're okay if we put by the 125% of the decommissioning cost.
Okay, okay, yep. Okay, next, minutes of October 22nd.
I'm gonna ask that we table these, 'cause I'm just seeing them right now for the first time, and they're fairly lengthy.
Motion to table.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting date would be the 26th of November. Motion and adjourned, second. Those in favor?
Aye.
I thank you, and good night, everyone.